I only did it because Ms. Klein was like, "You should do this." And I was like, "Okay, Ms. Klein." She knew something I didn't. Is the hawk the red? Is it a hawk or an eagle? It's a great eagle. On top of them. Okay. I'm just so used to hawks, you know? Mayors to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and of visible liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Chris? Haley?
Here.
Jessie?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
Debbie? Dave?
Here.
Michael? Eva?
Here.
Thank you. Next, I make a motion to enter executive session pursuant to MRS A four oh five six B to discuss student issues at six thirty-one PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right. All those in favor? Motion carries. To transfer to executive session at seven oh five PM. I make a motion to allow student one to earn credit based on grades weighted by attendance issues. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. I make a motion to allow student two to earn credit based on grades weighted by attendance issue. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Um, agenda adjustments. I know I have an agenda adjustment I want to add under item eight personnel P employment a motion to enter executive session pursuant to MRS A four oh five six A employment of officials, appointees, and employees. Any other agenda adjustments?
Yes, I just have some reservations to add. I would like to add Kevin Berry, an educational technician at the elementary school. Ginger Berger, an educational technician at the middle school. And Samantha Gero, sorry, Gero, an educational technician at the elementary school.
Do I have a second for the, I have a motion for the agenda adjustments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next up, approval of minutes. We'll take them in a group. I made a motion to approve the minutes of the regular reading of May sixth, special meeting of May ninth, special meeting of May sixteenth. Do I have a second? Yeah, we'll do a most approved and then we can have a discussion if there's any changes.
Can I make a motion? I'm gonna make a motion.
I'll retract my motion.
I have a, I'll make a motion to accept all three together, the adjustment for May ninth, the May nineteen minutes. The minutes have been marked down with on the second vote as of standing. I voted a yes there.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
Any discussion?
First, we went into executive session illegally and that wasn't documented. I came out and tried to discuss that. That was not, the reason we went into executive session that day is not accurately documented on your first, the second, or the third uh, executive session. So I'm not sure how to amend that. I asked prior to the third executive session to have that be public. You denied my request to have it be public and you swapped the executive session so that I could not ask for that to be, publicly ask for that to be, that request be respected. Executive session three, there was no documentation on that vote on the sixth.
You are correct. We don't have the second recorded, but we do have the overall votes.
And then you have the opposing going into the, the second executive session, which is inaccurate. I voted in favor of going into that. Which I checked based on a citizen's video from that day. To make sure. Do you follow?
Yeah, um, so you wanted it adjusted for where? Did you need to vote adjusted for what?
On the executive session on May sixth. Number two, I voted in favor of going into executive session. And then you will adjust the third executive session vote? Is that what you're saying?
What specifically are you, you're saying under number seven, number two, you voted for? And then what else are you asking to be adjusted?
The third executive session, there are no votes documented.
Uh, Chair, can we go back and just take them by date? So, reference May sixth.
Yes.
Yeah. Jessie, you want to say?
I'll retract my motion.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting from May sixth? We should vote on it and then have the discussion of what we want changed.
So?
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
Then we can discuss.
Yes, exactly. And Jessie, was there anything on May sixth? No. Haley, what did you want specifically changed for May sixth? You wanted executive session number seven, under number two, to reflect that you did not vote, you voted for? And then what is the other item that you're asking?
On number three, there are no votes to going into that executive session documented.
Okay. So we all had voted for? Did you vote against that one?
Yes.
You voted against that one?
I believe so, yes.
So like, I think what happened? Yeah.
But there are no votes at all documented there.
So it should be reflected that voting for, under number three, was everyone who was opposed.
I can't speak for how the vote was. I can't speak for how I voted. I know I voted against.
I'm gonna ask you how you voted.
I voted against the third. And I don't know, how do you plan to address that we did not discuss?
There was no illegal executive session.
There were. What is, the reason we went into this was not what happened in there. So how does that need to be reflected?
It is. For number three?
For two and three.
It is for number two and three.
Number three was supposed to be about me.
No, it never, there was no doubt about you.
I'm gonna remind the committee that they should not be discussing things that were discussed.
It's not a discussion, it was illegal. And so I'm very right, it was about me. Thank you for your opinion on that. Did I have any other discussion for the minutes?
Okay, executive session one. We are voting five to one. Is that correct? Is Mrs. Keizer, is he opposing on the executive session number one?
I don't remember opposing that. So, I'll have to look at the video. Honestly, I'm sure I don't know why I would oppose that.
Executive session two, opposing five to one. Mrs. Keizer is opposing.
No.
So you were a no vote, you were a yes?
I would say yes, vote on number two.
On two.
Which, based on what it said we were going in there for. Which is not what happened.
And then on executive session three, the vote was five to one. Mrs. Keizer opposing. So yes, is that correct or not? So did you guys, you guys?
They would have been saying.
Right. They didn't attend that one.
They didn't attend it. So that would be a three to one. Will Mrs. Keizer in the no?
All those in favor of those adjustments? To reflect the voting? All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of May ninth.
Do I have to know order or?
That's second?
Yeah. I second.
And any discussion, Jessie, you have something or not?
Yeah, marked down as sustaining on the motion, but I would say a yes.
Any discussion?
So I'd like to amend the motion to make that adjustment.
I've been waiting to hear you ask for where the audio or video recording of that meeting can be obtained and you haven't replied that.
No, I did reply back, actually. Remember, I said, I asked Jody for it and Jody hasn't, she was out today, so. Did, was there any other discussion on that?
So the voting is two on the chair, Mr. Keith, it's yes, and the opposing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Excuse me, I missed a second. Who seconded that?
Motion second.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I amended someone's second. Brian called Brandon.
I second, yeah.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Next up, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of May sixteenth as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Next, we'll move to committee acknowledgements. Jessie?
So I'll take a couple minutes here. As mostly you know, this is gonna be my last meeting as a school committee member. I'm met with some bitter, smug emotions, but I can say it's been an honor of serving the community and also supporting the students the past three and I guess, six years. Steph, I want to thank you for stepping into your role as leader of this committee as the chair. You're a fantastic leader and you have a passion in anything you set your mind to and you have a passion for our students. I'm gonna miss working with you. Debbie, it's hard to believe that we've worked six years together. It's flown by. You know my roots are in, are ZU eighty-seven. The partnership we have as a community is incredible. It's invaluable to our students. And I can say the same for the collaboration and partnership that you bring to this table. So thank you. Brian, I think it's safe to say you and I didn't necessarily see eye to eye at the start of your term. I'd like to think our working relationship and collaboration can be an example for others regardless of who's elected in the next couple of weeks. We've had our differences of opinions up here. We've aired them professionally. We did drag on the discussions when we realized that our opinions couldn't be swayed. And we took the appropriate votes. We moved on as a committee with the vote. So, Brian, I appreciate the professionalism and collaboration and the dedication that you have over the past year at the school. Eva, two years is a huge commitment. You've shined in the role. I've seen seven years as student reps and your commitment to excellence in this role goes unmatched. And particularly this year, Eva, you found your voice on the committee and you used it positively in really critical times during our discussions up here at the table. So it's been a privilege watching you grow as a student and develop into a true leader of the school and really of our community. I wish you the best as you graduate high school and continue like you did.
Haley?
Just wanna say I enjoy reading the packets. I love seeing all the successful things that the principals get to share, all the awards that our school makes us very proud as a committee and as a citizen. So, thank the students for all their hard work and the staff for all they put in. All year long, you know, the years are long, days are long, the years are short. I appreciate everything that they do and it's great to see all the success of her. For all you've done. I agree with what Jessie said, as I told you earlier. You've just been, you brought great discussion. You have been a voice and I watched you grow as a person and, um, yeah, you've been awesome. You've been doing great things, so.
Brian?
It's not fair, Jessie beat me to the punch, but we'd be so remiss if we didn't recognize Mr. Grant for, you know, this is also your last meeting, official scheduled meeting with us for fourteen years of commitment to the Herman School Department. And as I think I can speak to the majority of the committee members to say we thank you for the time and the effort that you put in and the impact you've had on our students. So thank you for that. Jessie beat me to the punch, but thank you, Jessie, for the time that you put in. And we can't forget that Mr. McGlaughlin designed effective this month and the time that he also provided to the, to the committee is very valuable. One thing I would like to state about all three, Mr. Grant, Mr. Keith, and Mr. McGlaughlin, is that I came up here as an opposing member, if you would, onto the committee and all three of you treated me with the utmost professionalism. And while, Jessie, as you mentioned, we were able to have conflicts on different levels over many different subjects, we were always able to be professional and outwardly, and I don't think anybody knew we'd disagree on things. And that's the level of professionalism that I'm used to working in. And I appreciate it because I know that you, Mr. McGlaughlin, and Mr. Grant have all had that relationship with me, so thank you. Any other? Yeah, it goes without saying.
Debbie?
I think I'll hold that.
Dave?
I just want to say I really enjoyed reading the reports this month from the principals. Reading the orders list and the high orders list for the high school was truly amazing. We get some pictures of some wonderful things that our schools, some kudos to them for their hard work. I love the challenge points that you guys are doing. Not all of this is a pretty cool idea, so congratulations to all the kiddos on their achievements and we love all of them.
I just wanted to do a personal thank, Eva, do you want to go? Okay, you'll go. I was gonna give you a personal thank you for your commitment to Herman. Herman is very lucky to have you as a student. I wanna congratulate you for how you're finishing the year. Really top-notch and we are so lucky to have you as a leader. You really set the bar for all of us even up here on stage and so I really, really thank you for being that leader. I wanna thank Jessie for the time that we've got to know each other over the last year. For the record, you beat me by three votes three years ago and I could not be more proud to have lost to you, Jessie. But didn't really lose because we've really done a lot over the last four years. It hasn't been easy and I appreciate all the time that we spent. And Micah, today's a really sad day in Herman to no longer be having you here on the stage. You are truly committed and it's very, very unfortunate that we are losing you in this district. It's a huge loss and your loss will be felt. So thank you, Micah, for your true commitment and thank you to your family for supporting you over the years.
So I have two votes presented here. Thank you for the kind comments. I'm gonna save mine for my superintendent's report. One is for Mr. Hall, go, Mr. Keith first, Mr. Keith. This one is for you. It's the only light we use. No, we appreciate your service and the last six years I, as Mr. Benziano said, this is, you've been a tremendous asset and I'm thankful that you are gonna get some peace and be able to enjoy your kids and drop them off at school and coach in sports and just getting to be a dad, it's gonna be, I'm sure, very fun for you. So thank you for your service. Six years is a long time and you've been very dedicated. So thank you, appreciate it, I love it. And Mr. Benjamin, congratulations. You're about to walk. I know you're excited. There's a gift and a gift card. It's a piece of paper. Don't throw the paper away because that has the code on it, okay? So it's for Maine flag at the University of Maine bookstore. So we got it through the school that you're going to. Congratulations and you will be blessed.
Before we move on to public comment, Jessie, I realize that I didn't recognize public comment from last time and I really wanna thank Bridgette Bridges for stepping up and talking about curriculum. Test scores is definitely something that we need and have been wanting to make a priority. And I know Melissa updated her curriculum report. She's unable to speak tonight, but that she's going to speak in July, so thank you for that. Yes, here, yeah, sorry.
I'll do my last committee acknowledgement on. So the senior class had our prom on May eighteenth. It was super fun. We had a photographer. One of the seniors fell out and it was her cousin and she did a great job capturing photos of everyone and capturing some fun of the night. We recently had our senior banquet, which was basically a roast fest where we were all just talking about other people, but it was super fun. You got to laugh at each other and laugh with each other. On this Thursday, we have our class day, so the seniors will march in front of the underclassmen. And we'll also induct the new class and club officers into their positions. And following, oh, the night before, we have class night to honor seniors that are receiving scholarships. And the best part of all, we have graduation this weekend. So graduation at the cross center this Saturday at eleven AM. I'll be doing the welcome speech as the salutatorian. Alex Smith will do the goodbye as president and Jonathan Hinchcliffe will do the president, the about the current speech. I'm not really sure what his will be about, but I'm sure it'll be great. And for, within the school, besides senior activities, we also have, he club posted a May sale and they raised two hundred and eighty dollars just for May, but so that's amazing. We also had the cabaret, which was a talent show. Some of the students and staff could show off their amazing talents. I participated in it and also watched it and it was phenomenal. And today we had an ice cream social to honor all of the people that served as club and class officers this year and to thank them for their hard work and leadership. Additionally, we had academic awards and athletic awards just to honor all of our student athletes and students that devote themselves to academics. I'm really proud of all my fellow students and how hard everyone works. And that will be all for today.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna move to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on agenda items, contribute information that may be of interest to the school committee or ask for questions. Please wait to be recognized and identify yourself before speaking. This is not the time for registered complaints or to vote a personal agenda. Please remember that you may not identify any person by name or job function, Jessie. We'll keep in mind, please. And we'd like to welcome Ray Noll.
School committee members, Ray Noll, Herman, I simply followed into the entire school committee meeting on May twenty-eighth and have received zero response from the committees. I was at the technology subcommittee meeting on May twenty-eighth and I thought the person in charge of IT for the school department did a great job running the meeting. I think he has made some great progress on the technology front. He understands facilitation and knowledge that things are better, but there's still more to be done. Especially like that when he turns off the old servers and will stay at the high school over five hundred dollars a month in electricity costs alone. Not including any pooling costs. The part that really bothered me was not during the meeting, but what happened after the meeting. Many members, Mr. Benziano, who waited for other students then sat down with two employees, started talking about how to run the meeting, what they should say, and administrative details like how they write it and agenda. And I remarked along, Paul Smith, Mr. Benziano, was not complying with his roles and responsibilities as a committee member. I don't know how many times I've heard this committee state that it's not the community's job to micromanage the school and refer any directions to the superintendent, not directly to the employee. Policies that I can find that he broke was BVA, BDD dash C, DCE, A, also the town charter six twenty zero seven, road visions. Except the purpose of the inquiry, the school committee and members shall deal with administrative services solely through the superintendent of schools. I've also seen the person in charge of IT for the school department might do what Mr. Benziano tells him to do because he's a school committee member. Not understanding that he should take all directions from the boss and superintendent. It should mean there could be a conflict in the proper direction that this person in charge of the IT for the school department does what Mr. Benziano wants and not the superintendent. I hope, and of course, this also involves making some quote about this too. I hope to see some sort of resolution on this. Thank you very much.
Next up?
Ms. Holland. Mr. Grant, if I overstep my bounds and for some reason I may Mr. Bridges or Miss Youngblood uncomfortable, I just wanna publicly apologize for that.
Thank you. Next up, Vicki Lowery.
Can people just speak into the mic because I can't hear? Good evening. My name is Vicki Lowery and I'm from Gardner. I'm from Gardner and I drove up tonight. My grandchildren go to school here and I have been watching your meetings for many, many months now and I noticed that you all gave each other accolades tonight and I appreciate that you appreciate each other. And Jessie, I have noticed that you are very respectful. However, on the other end of this, watching these meetings from my living room, I have seen not so many respectful attitudes. And it's quite appalling, really. I, I would think that you would expect your own children and the students here in the school to respect each other and to follow the golden rule. But I'm seeing other things sometimes in this committee. And it, I, I see people ask questions that aren't answered. They're bored. If you don't know the answer to a question, just say so. But at the very least, follow up with that person, get an answer, and follow up with the person. I mean, it's not just that person that wants the answer. The public wants the answer. And so I just would like to see more respect for each other and for you to have a sense of decorum that's worthy of the position that you hold.
Vicki, next up, Rebecca Hinchcliffe.
Hi, dear. My name is Rebecca Hinchcliffe and I am a resident of Libyans. I appreciate having the ability to watch the recorded monthly school board meetings and subcommittee meetings that I am unable to attend in person. I know that this is an added step and extra work to make that happen, so thank you. I am here tonight just to caution you as to how you move forward on the recently discussed changes to your code of ethics. This seems to be aimed at limiting free speech and reducing transparency. Preventing the recording of public discussions pertaining to our school and students just doesn't seem right. Preventing school board members from sharing information online or really in any other format that is deemed important and crucial to the community they were elected to serve is unethical and a violation of their rights of free speech. I know this community has become unfortunately divided in recent years, but this is, I don't think, the solution. It seems to be a pointed attempt to silence individuals whom the majority may not agree with. The timing of this coming up now, just weeks before an election, is really unfortunate. I am not on any side. I am not on any side other than that of the students, staff and parents. Regardless of who you are or what you believe, each one of you should have a right to be heard. It has been proven that whenever there is increased parental involvement, community participation, students are more successful. They have better attendance, better behavior, better grades and better social skills. A policy that seeks to limit transparency will do just the opposite. As a mom, I've always taught my children that whispering is rude and inconsiderate and that if they can't say it out loud, perhaps it's something that should not be said at all. If someone is elected to the school board, town council or any other public office, they are a public servant. What they say or do should be a matter of public record. If those individuals are conducting themselves in a professional and respectful manner, then they should have nothing to hide. Please respect one another's right to free speech and uphold the ability for us, the community of the Herman schools, to continue to be a part of the important work that you were elected to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Erin York.
Hi, Erin York and I teach third grade at the elementary school and I'm also the Herman Education Association president. I'm here tonight to recognize Stephanie Euler as the recipient of the Friend of Education Award for the year 2024. So, the HEA nominated Stephanie for this award, which is given by the Maine Education Association each year to a person who currently is holding an elected or appointed public position and is currently making a significant contribution to public education. So, out of all the nominees in Maine, Stephanie won and was presented this award in May at a banquet in Portland. So, I would just like to read the introduction that was given that night to explain why Stephanie won this award. Stephanie Euler is presented with the Friend of Education Award in recognition of her dedication and support of the students and educators in the Herman school department. Stephanie has been an active volunteer in the Herman schools since her children were in kindergarten. More recently, she's volunteered for the junior achievement program in third and fourth grade this year and is the key club advisor for the high school. Currently, Stephanie serves as the chair of the Herman school committee, where she's proven herself to be a strong advocate for Herman students and educators. The MEA is proud to recognize Stephanie Euler with this year's Friend of Education Awards. Congratulations, Stephanie.
Thank you. Next up, Ed Ford.
Good evening. Ed Ford, Herman. As a Herman citizen, I would like to know why this code of conduct, code of ethics policy is on the agenda specifically during the month of June. You have a Herman school board that is currently in transition. Herman's current school board is down one school member and the total number of board members will stay four until November this year, even after the local election in eight days. Possibly there will be two new school board members following the election on June 11th guaranteed and they will be guaranteed at least have one new member. So, here's my question. Should this board have waited for the next school term to be seated to make amendments to such an important policy? Herman's school district has a superintendent that has resigned as of April 1st. Doesn't this discussion on the code of ethics policy warrant having the current educational leader of the school department as part of this important conversation? And probably most importantly, look at the hundred pages or so of the announcements in tonight's meeting. There should be time for the entire school committee to celebrate and recognize the academic accomplishments of Herman seniors, not to engage in a discussion that can only be divisive. Nobody will feel good following a discussion about this policy. And it's not a lesson for our country's First Amendment for these high school seniors. With all the above mentioned, it seems curious the school board would take on this policy. Quite frankly, to take on any new policies on the last meeting of the term wouldn't have been a good idea for the school board to finish or wrap up the work started rather than beginning revision of a policy that without doubt require thorough review of the U.S. Constitution, the First Amendment, as well as any conversation with the school lawyers on current main statute, as well as reviewing any precedents that may be on the law books concerning school boards creating policy to restrict school board members' First Amendment rights, recording public officials or censuring other school board members. This Herman citizen is concerned about the first draft of this policy we're about to read. That comes before the board tonight, had a scheduled subcommittee meeting on May 21st, but was moved to May 17th without proper notice to all school board members. I never knew this subcommittee was moved. The spirit of this policy is to make sure people were notified. The current discussion of the copy of the code of this ethics has an air of impunity. Herman citizens already have a way to determine how well a school board member completes their service. There is a mechanism that Herman citizens can take action if a school board member or a superintendent feel harmed or disparaged. It's called an election. And thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Next up, Eva Benjamin.
Eva Benjamin, Herman. For the past two years, I have served as a student rep for the Herman school committee. When I was interviewed for this position, I thought it would be a great opportunity for me. But boy, was I clueless about what I was taking myself into. I quickly realized that this leadership position would be much more difficult than I imagined. I started my academic journey in the Herman school district and I will graduate from Herman High School this weekend. Throughout my 12 years in the district, not once did I consider my education or experience to be inadequate. I have always been proud to attend Herman schools, especially Herman High School. However, what I have witnessed as a student rep for this school board is embarrassing. I am ashamed of the behavior I have witnessed from adults and intercom community. Our community is growing apart and hatred is fueling that separation. I have listened to adults complain and whine, behaviors that I caught people out through. I have listened to issues in other states and many problems that are not relevant to the school board. I have heard enough hatred and misinformation for a lifetime. I have watched adults act like children, which force children to act like adults. This experience has been memorable and rewarding, yet also challenging and stressful. I have witnessed the true maturity and immaturity of adults. I have witnessed wisdom and knowledge, but also ignorance and arrogance. I would like to personally thank every member of the school committee, especially Mr. Grant and Mrs. Euler. You have both served as grateful models for me and your strength when faced with adversity is incredible. The school committee is full of strong leaders, but my greatest wish for the committee and the community is to focus on spreading positivity instead of hate. This group of people volunteered their time to improve and better the school. I would ask each of you to consider what's best for the students and show the student body what a true leader is. My experience in this position has taught me resilience and maturity. I am grateful for the time that the Herman school, on the Herman school committee because I know that I am ready to face the next chapter of my life and I can hold a poker face no matter how preposterous someone may be.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to recommendations.
Yes, you have one that was listed in the packet. That is Mr. Joseph Solota. He has been a custodian here at the high school for the last eight or nine years. We appreciate his service and wishing the best of luck on retirement. And then the agenda adjustments that I mentioned earlier, Mr. Barry, Mrs. Berger and Mrs. Darrow, all the educational technicians at the various buildings, mainly the, mainly, excuse me, the elementary and high school.
I make a motion to enter an executive session pursuant to MRSA 405-6A, employment of officials, appointees and employees. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Yes, I'll let your executive session at 7:42. I make an executive session at 7:51. I make a motion to approve Patricia Darren as interim superintendent of the Herman school system. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any extensions?
Just to make the decision, please. Because we don't call our new superintendent the director of the community.
All those opposed? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Patty. We are very, very excited to have you.
You have one, two, three, four, yes, four appointments. The first one, I would like the committee to move, well, I actually already hired Vanessa Cronk, Special Education Secretary. We're on the hash here because you've already accepted her resignation several months ago. We're very excited about Vanessa. She has experience in that role and is a very potential. There's a lot of paperwork and she brings a whole lot of information to that. And I'll go through the rest of them and then you can take them one at a time, I'm assuming. But we also have Rochelle Ball. She is for social studies here at Herman High School. Had a really nice interview. She's coming over from Orno High School and brings a lot of giving background to the position. Has some experience working at charter schools down in the central Maine area, as well as Orno High School. And then also Monique Christian. She has been an educational technician here at Herman High School for the last couple of years. And excited to bring her forward for health. She'd also served as a police officer for the town of Handen for several years. And again, really seems to understand, you know, what's important in a health curriculum. And I think she would do a great job connecting with our students. And then finally, Bethany Willard. We got to watch Bethany. She was a student teacher here in the fall. And we have another social studies position opening up. And so, we just felt like she was a great fit. We got to, again, get to watch her teach. And again, I'll highly recommend those individuals for those same positions.
I make a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to employ Vanessa Cronk, Special Education Secretary. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Any extensions?
It's not a teaching position.
Yes. I make a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to employ Rochelle Ball as the high school social studies teacher. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any extensions? All those in favor? Motion carries unanimous. I make a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to employ Monique Christian, health teacher. Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. I make a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to employ Bethany Willard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries.
And you also have two extra curriculars. One is for the chemical hygiene officer. That is Mrs. Taylor. She's our science department chair here at the high school. And you also have due to the middle school staff, Steve Boyd, resource officer. And so, those for co-curricular hygiene officer and volunteer assistant to the softball team at the middle school.
And then I want to give the public an opportunity to be able to speak for our own business. We'll close public comment. We have excused attendance from May 6th, Chris McLaughlin. May 9th, Haley Keizer, Chris McLaughlin, David Wallace, David Hart. And then May 16th, Chris McLaughlin, David Wallace, Stephen Hart. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Any extensions? I move to approve the second reading to amend JGAA assignment students to classes five year olds. Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Any? I make a motion to approve the second reading to amend JLCE first aid emergency care. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. I make a motion to approve the second reading to adopt JLCR first aid administrative procedure. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. I make a motion to approve the second reading to adopt KJA relations with booster groups. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. I'd like to open it up to the public comment for new business. We'll close the public comment for new business. I move to approve myself and whoever else would like to join to interview the student representative candidates. Haley? So, I move to approve Haley and I to interview the student representative candidates. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? That will be over the next week before school gets done and it potentially can be during the day to be able to meet the students. I think there's two of them.
We actually have three. I would recommend high school.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any? I make a motion to approve the transfer of 5% of the funds from one cost center to be used to balance the other cost centers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just like last year, I asked, it's not necessarily a need and we'll just follow up if it was a cost center exchange, if that ever happened, there was a surplus. So, it seems like this is done out of technicality. Is that accurate or like just a case? This isn't a need, it's just a case?
No, this will probably happen, but we won't know until we get to balancing at the end of the fiscal year. So, we'll probably overexpend in one area and have to balance it from another area.
But there's no way that like one area to a hazard that doesn't tell the committee where that money's coming from or where it's going to?
No, it doesn't.
Is there a line item that you foresee to be overspent?
I would have to ask the business manager if she had, if wanted to be there making prediction.
The four were spent already on transportation. Do we know that?
Yeah.
Plus purchase. So, we know that.
Any other discussion?
And the one cost center that it's taken from and wanted to move to is they reported later in the year. We've seen that in high school reports. So, like we really saw it either September or before October last year. So, it's a chance for us. It's the air force to see. So, this means just to give you, excuse me, the flexibility to move funds around up to 5%?
If a cost center was, if it was over expended, it needed to pay a bill, yes?
Which we know, at least one.
Yes, transportation. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Any extensions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. I make a motion to approve- I make a motion to approve the first reading to amend BCA Board Member Code of Ethics. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? I have lots. Yeah, I do too.
Yeah, I appreciate the public comment and asking why it is that we've needed to review it. I think it's very, very long overdue, as we all know, we have, our students have a code of ethics that they have to follow. And if they don't follow that behavior, there's repercussions. They get suspended, carrots go and talk with the administrators. So we've lost a superintendent, we've lost committee members. I really think it's time to be able to look at this policy. I have no skin in the game, I might not even be at the table next month. So it's a first reading, as we all know. Second readings is where it goes into effect. So I just really want to add that because I think it's very, very important that nothing happens until the second reading. We had concerned, community members reached out for some of these changes. I definitely think there's some changes that need to be adjusted beyond the red. Of course, I support videoing meetings that we have, that's not the purpose of this. The purpose of this is if we are in executive session, we're not to be recording or should never be recording any conversations that are one-on-one outside of additional committee meetings. And so I, I support it, I think it's a great opportunity for us to really model behavior for our students. So that's why I'd like to open it up to whatever else anyone else has.
Sure. So these were not dropped out of committee members speaking under their personal capacity. This is, you haven't addressed the fact that there's school board members who have Facebook pages representing as though they're Herman School Committee.
How's that being? Speaking to the policy, you guys stick specific to this policy.
We didn't address, in this policy, you didn't address the fact that there shouldn't be committee pages privately listing as though they're representing and speaking as a committee from that social media platform.
What wording do you want added?
Okay, there.
Well, can we, can we stick with that one item before we move to the next? So what wording did you want added?
I'm not sure, because I have, I have a list going down here.
Well, I'm asking that we follow them in order because I think that that's going to be a great way to be able to keep track of them. Because I don't want to have to go back and asking, what did you want suggested within the policy?
That committee members will not have committee pages representing the school committee as though they're speaking as a school committee member. So when, when they're on social media, you're writing as a Herman School Committee is automatically visually representing the school committee. They're not speaking in their personal capacity, they're speaking as a school committee member. The, the policy, and it's been reiterated constantly here, that we have no authority when we leave this table, that we only have authority when we're together, not individually. But when we have a committee member with a page that actually says Herman School Committee, it's as though it represents the views of the school committee.
So again, I just wanted to ask what it was that you wanted to add for a little bit.
I think what, I think what, Haley, what you're saying is already represented here to the. I will remember at all times as an individual, have no legal authority outside the meetings of the school committee. But I will conduct my relationship with the school staff or local citizenry, email media, communications on the basis of this.
Correct, but when you have a Facebook page that actually says a committee member, Herman School Committee, they are speaking in the capacity of, which we have the right to do if we are asked to do so. So instead of having the board chair or a unified paper community with the public, meetings and such, to actually have a representation of the school committee.
So back to Jess's point, I believe D already covered some of that. It doesn't, what words do you want changed?
I feel that there should be no private slash, it's a public, it's operating as a public entity when he's speaking.
So it would be similar to committee members commenting within public meeting groups as well?
No, I'm saying that.
Is that what I'm hearing?
No. I'm saying when we speak outside of this table, we are speaking as private citizens. When you have a social media account that is of your professional, your elected position, you are speaking as an elected official on behalf of all of us. So instead of trying to constrain our individual freedom of speech, it should be that school committee members will not have accounts representing their, the school committee.
I just want to clarify this, nobody's trying to constrain people. I just want to bring you to see this as I will make no disparaging remarks.
Correct.
Yeah, and we can definitely look up the definition of that.
I have it, I thought it just breaks.
Oh, perfect. So what did you want changed on D, it was still very unclear to me? Yep, that's the one that Jess is pointing out that is.
I didn't agree with that. I'm saying, yes, we can speak individually when we're not here, of course.
Okay, Mrs. Keys, so we'll move on, but I'm just looking for, I have yet to hear your suggestion that you want to be able to add for words for that one.
This, this is coming out of a personal motivation because I'm speaking to public information.
There's no personal motivation in this, this is called accountability for the whole committee. There's no personal.
It is personal because you are addressing issues that are, that public statements that are being made.
You are making it personal by saying you. Could you move on please?
Well, I made it personal when you filed letters against me, yeah, I made it personal.
You want me to attribute a certain. Could you move forward please with what you would like changed with the policy?
This policy is stemming out of me trying to correct the things that are happening and they just follow the rules and you don't want me to talk about that.
What do you want changed in the policy?
This policy will violate civil rights, the First Amendment, federal and state statute.
How is that, I know you're reading that, but how is that and what part of it does that?
Disparaging remarks, there are no disparaging remarks, factual remarks are not disparaging.
That's in part of the policy since 2006.
I understand that.
There's no change that I'm making.
You're, you're trying to say on social media, you're, you're trying to control the flow.
So that was brought up by a member of the public that brought that forth to us. This is, this is not personal to you.
Well, it was when you filed my reports to the DOJ, it became personal, you're right. So let's, let's talk back here. This is also controlling the freedom of access of information and trying to share information that is then an issue. This violates Charter.
What is, like, you can't say this, like, what has changed in the red is?
That if any of us speak in our personal capacity, here, social media, or anywhere, that you're trying to control the flow of information and that we can't talk about it because you find it personally disparaging. It's factual, you don't want us to talk about facts outside of this meeting.
You're, you're entitled to your opinion, you're correct.
Charter, section 11F says that any person can express privately or publicly their position or on political subject.
I'm not hearing what you want changed within this policy, please. You're reading us off, please, someone's provided, please.
No one's provided you anything.
Please provide specific letters that want adjusted within our policy.
That is a very do好的 statement.
What would you like changed within this policy?
I would like to amend the policy to say it should, it should be the exact opposite. First of all, let our S, you can't even do that, that, that's a violation of, the statute already outlines the freedom of access of information, so you can't even say that.
I agree with you, further clarification needs to be made there, however.
So why are we reading your whole word?
I allow you the opportunity to speak first. Could you have the respect please and allow me to explain before you make a statement like that? I believe it needs to be clarified that there should be no recording of executive session. I don't believe that it should say I will not record school committee members because that would mean that none of these meetings could be recorded. So I actually agree with you on that.
So that's already outlined that the session can't be recorded, that's already outlined, whereas in the executive session policy and in the statute, it's already clear. So you're adding it for what purpose?
Okay, you know, that's why we're having a healthy dialogue right now, great point, Mrs. Kizer, and perhaps that item could be scratched. So I make a motion to retract this, go forward with all the year changes, because it sounds like there's quite a few.
I see these policies were trying to control free speech outside.
Stop saying I'm trying to control, I will retract my motion and we can table this item until next time. I have zero agenda in this, okay, zero, I will retract my motion. I make a motion to table this item until next time.
I actually think this is good timing. Yes, Mrs. Keys, I think this is excellent timing. I think that every year in June, the outgoing committee should review the ethics and the incoming committee should approve the final reading. It is something that this organization needs. So it is needed, the last time this was reviewed is 2006, a lot's changed. Every year, it should be reviewed for all of us to approve old being outgoing, giving lessons learned, and new being incoming, of this is what our ethics are. Ethics, obviously, have a whole lot of different meanings to people in this world. But when you're in a professional body, with professionals that act professionally, their code of ethics is relatively skinny. Those bodies that have trouble managing themselves professionally will end up with a lot more written in a code of ethics. So we do need an ethics update, it needs to be done every year. So, Mrs. Kizer, if it's just me and you here next year, we need to have this on the agenda in May for the policy meeting, so it can be before us in June as a first reading in July for a second year. That needs to be a tradition.
Thank you, Mr. Benzema, did you have more to add?
I, I do. Social media expectations and stuff is new to this because we didn't have social media until 2006. We need to address that. There's a lot of interpersonal digs that everybody in the room is aware of, but nobody actually wants to come out and say it. There are, there are threats and false accusations that are thrown around this room on a regular basis, which is non-professional behavior. I've said it to people that are in the audience, that in my entire professional career, I never had to deal with this lack of professionalism. So how do we deal with it? It has to go into a policy under ethics. So we can either figure it out now, or we can have a food fight over it next month, but this isn't going away. It also needs some teeth. Nothing in here tells us what we do with somebody if they violate the code of ethics. And that was a comment that was brought up in the policy subcommittee. There needs to be some teeth and an agreement that there, if there is any disempowerment needs to be taken, we need to look at it as a, as a third-party lawyer. So that if there is a violation of ethics among this group, that it is looked at from an external source, so that it is managed correctly.
Thank you, I have retracted my motion because I have zero personal agenda to this and I appreciate you adding that. And so I'm going to put my motion back on the table to, and you can open back up for discussion, to move to approve the first reading to amend BCA Board Member Code of Ethics. Do you have a second?
Yeah, I second it, so we can have the discussion.
Yeah. Jess, did you want to add anything?
I mean, to get there, there's, looking at this outside of S, which is the, I will not record school employees or other school committee members without their written consent. I know you're hoping to change it, Haley, I agree with you, someone does that, it's slimy, but you're going to lose trust when people do that, but legally you can do it, so S should be gone. Other than that, there's really almost no change to the current code of ethics. The only thing that that's added is to others or on social media.
Jess, but, but it's before, it covered anything in or out of school committee meetings, we try and cover that anyway. So there's really just, there's not a lot of change here. And I agree with your, with your comment, Brian, on, on there's no teeth in this, but I mean, that's really hard, maybe a third-party lawyer can help put it. I mean, there is no teeth, there never been teeth in this because it's hard to actually put teeth in that. Other than the community part of teeth, right? If they see a committee member continuously violating the code of ethics that they agreed to when they chose to serve, it's up to the communities to get them out of this. I do have one rebuttal, if you could, Jess, to S. I'm constantly reminded that when I have a conversation with an official administrator, superintendent, it is, should be public knowledge. If a committee member is recording a conversation between another committee member or a school official, in essence, it is now, it should be public domain. It isn't public domain if I don't know I'm being recorded by another committee member and then it's going to be labeled as a public conversation because I can't access that conversation. So if it is, if I'm being recorded by another committee member and I'm unaware of it, it is a public domain, I should be aware of it so I can have access to it. Because the way it is right now is we're saying as a committee, we can secretly record each other without the other one knowing it, even though it should be public domain, make it public domain. I don't have, I've always said, I don't have a problem with somebody recording, I want to know about it because it's public domain.
To have those conversations in public, it is always public. It is a one-parted state, so that's, so that's the statute, I can't help the statute.
That's the statute.
That's what you're going to talk about, please.
Yep, the code of ethics is to a higher level than a statute. The statute says one part, yep.
When we're talking code of ethics and we're talking integrity, is it the fact that what is said in private is different than what is said in public and has a concern?
No, what I'm saying is what is said among committee members, if one is recording it, I should have access to my report. If I'm being recorded, then I should have access to that report. So which means you would have to tell me, or Deb would have to tell me that she's recording my conversation with her.
That's a way to change the statute.
No, I'm not talking about a change of statute.
We can't, we can't pause the other statute, we can't.
I'm saying as a code of ethics, I'm saying as a code of ethics, we should know better than to secretly record each other. And if it's being recorded, it should be public. So record me and then make it public.
Have your conversations in New York with the committee in public.
If anybody does public work, it is nearly impossible to have every communication on this stage. It's not the intent of this stage.
Correct, that's what some committees are for.
I've had more conversations with Jessi offstage and onstage. And you can record it because there's nothing we've said that is out of line, inappropriate, that can't be public domain. But we can't do this volume of work on stage, we could be here all night, and have some committee meetings who take all day. Here's a level, call Deb, ask for advice on things. I don't mind if she's recorded it, I said, I recorded it, Brian, I'll be able to.
Sure.
Yeah, I believe that, that's a level of ethics amongst each other, that's the point.
That would be disrespectful.
I've had many conversations with administrators, including a superintendent. And if it's not something that can be done in public, either due to time constraints, which is the subject that you're discussing, it doesn't lend itself to have 40 eyes on it that you're going discussing it. But if you want to record it, make it public knowledge, I don't have a problem with it, but I have to know it's being done.
I definitely hear your concern and I, I can understand, like, I'm just saying purely based on. And I can understand, like, I'm just saying purely based on the statute that we can't policy something just because we want it that way. It has to be in accordance with the law.
I will agree with Jesse. If you record it and not tell the other guy or person, it's slimy. And if that's the ethics we want for our town, that speaks volumes. I don't think that's right. If somebody is recording me, show me the respect, tell them that you're recording me, so it can be made in the public domain when we're talking about official business. I don't have a problem with that. It should be made in the public domain. You can't do that if only one person knows it's being recorded. And if you're doing it that way, it is being slimy. So remember, this is ethics. There are teeth for this. This is just a standard of behavior that I will abide by. You have teeth in your rules. And there's a way to deal with people that break the rules. But in regards to S, no school employee should be recorded by a school committee member without their consent. Period. It's beyond sleazy. It's cowardly. And they should not worry about that conversation going public and being used. And with artificial intelligence now, my thirty seconds of talking could be warped and changed, and I would have no control and no rebuttal. It could be flipped, used against me. And so you can do whatever you want with this. A school employee should not be recorded ethically by any school committee member without their consent.
Could that go more, that just ethically, though, because if you're recording a school employee, you indicate comments about that recording, that can be considered a valuation of it?
Absolutely. Again, ethically, it's wrong, and I think there are significant legal ramifications. There's also trust. If I think somebody's being sleazy, I don't talk to them. So if you want to record me, and tell me you're being, I'm being recorded, I'm more than willing to talk to you. If you want to record me, and make me think you're recording me, but you're not going to tell me, so I can't make it public knowledge, I guess I'm not so interested in talking to those types of people.
So. Back to not saying this is some sort of personal attack, because sure, it seems like you were making accusations.
We're not, we're not moving forward. No, we're not moving forward with, I'm not going to continue allowing you to say that after other committee members have spoke enough. You're going to want to change with this code of ethics.
I was trying to tell you. And I'm ready. We have a freedom of speech. We have policies that already say we have no authority, and that any statements that are made outside of here have no reflection of the school committee unless they are designated by the committee to speak on behalf. That is where the fear I have of social media pages that are created as representatives of the school committee. My First Amendment suggestion is the exact opposite of what you have drafted. The Honorable School Committee will encourage and promote all voices to be heard at the table while recognizing that statements are the opinion of the speaker in their personal capacity. So instead of trying to limit speech, I'm asking us to encourage us to talk to one another, and realizing that any statements we have are always in our personal capacity. Would you like me to email you this? Sure. In addition to code of ethics, it's been mentioned before that we should add, committee members will abide by a professional dress code for all public meetings.
What are you looking to? Can you elaborate, please?
A professional dress code?
Yeah, what does that mean to you?
That it would abide by what is professional dress, what we expect of our teachers, what we should expect of our committee members. We don't want teachers wear jeans. We don't. I thought she just put a policy before she did not.
There is a dress policy that was, dress code that was done, I want to say, four months ago. Don't hold me to it, but it's been.
I thought it was all jeans on certain days.
No. I have to go back and look at it, but the dress, there was, there is a policy on dress code that can be dressed appropriately through the dress code. Jeans has not been removed from these schools' dress codes.
That came in front of the whole committee. I know you were saying she. The chair doesn't change policy.
Oh, I was referencing what you said in public comment. Did you have? Did you have something you wanted to add? Go. Did you hear you?
Sure.
So yeah, I think it should be added, that we will put professional elements from the school committee meetings.
Did you email me something? Do me a hand, if I missed that.
I did email you.
Do you know?
I was here for public discussion.
Dress code of ethics, or, I'm having a hard time. You can put dress code in BEB, which is school committee rules, where you can put dress code in the dress code policy. The dress code isn't a code of ethics.
I agree with you. What you were talking about, speaking professional and representing professionally. Mrs. Kiezer, what else do you want to change? These statements that keep going back and forth about accountability, and the policy needs to have teeth. We are elected officials. We are not employees. We are not students. What else could you want to add to the code of ethics? This is discussion I'm speaking. You just cut me off again. To try to control the police, the free speech, that we are elected to represent the voice of people, students, staff, to continue to try to control what is said, to control meeting times, and to have retaliation for when you think someone doesn't follow something. There are all sorts of policies that are not followed by this committee all the time.
It's not our job. For the code of ethics, because I keep on hearing you say retaliation.
It is not our job.
And the same word comes to me, accountability. It's called accountability.
It is not our job as elected officials to police our free speech. It's our job to speak on behalf of the people. So to continue to try to have a consequence for someone who says something that, define disparaging. Who, who, I have a definition. That statement, when I say define, I don't mean that. I mean it as in, what is the moral, how do you measure disparaging? It's an opinion. You think it's disparaging? I think it's fact.
Do you think I'm a moron?
Well, I think you're asking me an opinion.
You're stating it's, do you think I'm a moron?
You're asking me an opinion.
I'm, okay, I'm asking your opinion. Do you think I'm a moron? Because I find that a disparaging remark.
Do you think I'm a liar?
I have not called you a liar, but you have made that disparaging remark.
Wrong.
But I'm sure you have that on recording.
You have called me a liar multiple times, multiple constitutions.
I'm sure you have that on recording. So do you have, do you consider me a moron, is that a disparaging remark? And that's where we come into ethics, again.
It's personal opinion. I'm not answering your question. I'm saying that personal opinion is free speech. I'm sorry.
So I want to ask you a question along that. So you're hypothetically, how would you feel if an eighteen-year-old said that to one of your children?
Nope.
I'm just, I'm just asking the question. How would any of us feel if their eighteen-year-old child was spoken that way?
I have more concerns about, that's called bullying. You're right. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I can agree that that's bullying. Sure. You can see that in children. It's outlined in policy. There's fourteen different policies that I have found that already outline all of the rules for the internet, for employees, conduct of staff and students, bullying, informational records. So when we're talking about this accusation, you keep saying, which is an accusation and is not true, about recording meetings, I'd like to know why staff are communicating and texting with committee members about executive session. How are they getting that information?
I have no idea what you're talking about. This policy, that's from 2006. There's very, very few words that we are changing in this policy. We are just, as Mr. Benzian said, should be one of those every single year. It's unfortunate that we haven't reviewed it since 2006. So I'd love to hear specifically what you want changed.
I already can't. I read you about Bradley Complu.
Yep, you had a recommendation that you didn't announce to me. And Micah, you're going to get an outside opinion from an attorney?
Yep, on what part? The, I heard a couple of different, oh, yep, I can do that.
So then this should be counted as a first reading. We should table this, because that information was supposed to come before, because that was discussed at the subcommittee, and that was recommended, and want to be input from the whole committee. So then I appreciate that you collected that. I make a motion to table this until we have further information, recommendations for changes.
Sorry, the motion on the table, so neither Brian nor I would have to retract that motion.
Tableing it supersedes that, correct? I don't know if I'm going to make, of all the things I typically have, tabling stops all discussion and supersedes your two motions.
I think the bit of adding regarding social media is a majority aspect of 2006. Jesse said it wasn't a factor, so that's something that doesn't need to be part of this policy. And you're exactly right. That's all we're adding.
So the addition to paragraph C, "I will make no disparaging remarks," is not an addition. "To others or on social media" is an addition. Is there an issue with that? So all, the addition is "to others or on social media."
Well, first of all, you will also need statements about adding teeth to this policy.
Just ask him a question about final C.
While I, I will not discuss the confidential business of executive session of the school committee in my home, on the street, in my office, or on social media. S, I will not record school employees and other school committee members without their written consent. That is a, that's the only hope regarding that.
There's no hope of disparaging in the matter of opinion.
That's not a change, though.
That's been in there since 2006.
Disparaging has been in there. I just highlighted the changes. I don't want to go through those.
So when, so how will you measure whether something is not in compliance? How will that measure compliance?
That's what we just said. We're going to come back to for the second meeting.
You can't make changes at a second meeting unless you can. You need to have it ready to go. It needs to go back to subcommittee for drafting and discussion. You can't just drive through a first reading. I know you do it this way, but it's not supposed to be done this way. Thank you so much. You're welcome. Why would you not promote it being done correctly? Why does it need to be rushed through?
There's nothing that needs to be rushed through.
Then let it be tabled. Then table it until we can discuss it at a subcommittee, and we can allow input from the whole committee.
Mrs. Kiezer, I have to prove to you that I have zero personal interest and motivation in this. I've said it. I have no problem tabling it. But I heard from other committee members, and so we're moving forward. Any other discussion?
Can you just remind me what the motion was?
The motion is, for the first reading, I would suggest that for now, there's some language that needs to be changed in S, I believe. I think it needs to be perfectly clarified.
Amending your motion to approve S for now?
Unless there's a different way of saying it, but I don't like the way it reads, because it's my impression that we wouldn't be able to be recorded in meetings and have no problem with it. Perhaps it needs to say, "I will not record school committee members or other school committee members outside of committee or subcommittee meetings without their written consent." That would be a way.
Without their knowledge. We all will be recorded during one of these meetings.
Without, okay.
And committee will not, or employee will not be recorded without their knowledge.
So just changing, uh, knowledge instead of written consent.
Yep, because we all know what we're here. Just have knowledge to be reported.
Yep. So when people accuse me of having hired my own attorneys to get my own independent opinion on things, this is why. Because I couldn't care less about the, I understand disposition. I must have disagreed with that. I'm saying that we cannot policy out of statute. I absolutely understand. If you're being recorded, you want to know. Totally understand and agree with you. However, it's the statute. We can't policy out of that. I respect staff, although, absolutely. My position isn't personal. It's saying, this is the statute. You have to follow it. I understand the personal. Who doesn't want to know they're being recorded? Of course.
So it's against the law to tell me that I'm being recorded?
It's not against the law to tell you, but the law states that you don't have to, and I can't help that.
Okay, and I'm asking you, as a professional, to have an ethical, ethical standard to inform you when you.
Where are the teeth in that challenge? Where are the teeth? Because nothing, nothing, that's the thing.
That is the thing. I've never been in a situation where I've.
Neither have I.
Ethical behavior with somebody.
I have, I have.
I don't know where to go with it.
You go to an election. You go to a recall process. You're, you're trying to control the voice of the voter.
I'm not trying to control the voice of the voter. I'm trying to get my voice, that may be recorded, out to the voter. I'm not saying you can't give it to the voter. I'm saying tell me about it, so I can make sure that if there's anything controversial, and the voter can get access to it. Because right now, when you don't tell a second person, there is no way for that, for that recording to have a fallout, because it's, it's a secret conversation. You, you, the person that records it has all the information and can, can slice and dice that however they want to for whatever want they need, or whatever need they want. I'm saying if you're going to record me, tell me, so that we can make it public knowledge, and if the public wants to know what I said to you in a conversation on the phone call, fine, we both know about it. It's vulnerable. I'm not violating the law, because I'm not saying you can't record me. I'm saying if you're recording me, tell me, so we can make sure that everybody can have access to it.
Well, the good news is I don't talk to anybody outside of the committee, so there won't be any reports to be had.
It would surprise me to call you, David, when I think I'm being recorded all the time, and you're not chairman. So.
That's your own personal career.
You can put on the list of things that I've said. But, I mean, if you want to have the respect of interpersonal communication, then you need to believe that you're having ethical behavior with the people you're talking to, correct? And if we want to be an ethical school and ethical committee, then we should be working towards that, some ethical standards.
Do you operate with ethical standards?
Okay, so Jesse, do you want to enter it?
For the record, I find myself being recorded without my knowledge to be unethical behavior. Just for the record.
Jesse?
Yeah, just, I think I'm okay with the first reading of this outside of S. Really, no changes to the current policy, or no changes to the current policy outside of S. Brian, I get your point. I will be here when you guys handle this down. It's going to be a tough discussion. But I think the most critical portion of what we have in S now is, is protecting our employees and making sure they understand when they're being recorded. I think that has, I think that has a component of evaluation to it, that, that creates an issue with confidentiality. So I do think, maybe that's a discussion for the attorneys, but I do think if a school committee member records a school employee, that could be a breach of confidentiality. But I think that's, that's another thing.
Any other discussion?
Would you amend it to have it instead of without their written consent, to have it simply say, "without their knowledge"?
I'm fine with just that school employees, yes. I think it needs to be tabled. I made that motion. It should stop discussion, and it should go back to policy for discussion.
We're making very few changes to this policy, as we just know it. So. Jesse, for S, you were saying, "I will not record school employees without their knowledge."
I would like an attorney to view that for a little bit.
So we can strike that until next time. So we can strike that until next time.
Again, if we're striking that and I have an addition, why aren't we tabling it? So those can come forward for another first reading to have that cleaned up. That needs to be done for a first reading, not a second. The second is, yep, we read it through the first draft, it's good. Then we go to second. There's no hurry. I don't get it.
I've never been in an organization that didn't want to improve their ethics.
I do want to improve the ethics. I have these to add. I have these to add.
All those in, all those in favor? We're gonna table.
What's the motion?
The motion is to approve, approve the first reading of B C A minus S, minus S.
Well, okay.
We have a second.
If she's got additions, let's hear them. I'm not against additions.
Who, who's the, who's the second?
My second.
We're waiting for you to suggest what you'd like to, you have more?
Yeah, I did, I just to add, if we're striking out S, then this will be S. The Herman School Committee will encourage and promote all voices to be heard at the table while recognizing that statements are the opinion of a speaker in their personal capacity.
I think you already read that one.
I did, you know that. I did, but you were moving on with the motion as though this was a first reading.
And it is.
So you're willing to add that or you're not? No, we should, no, you're not. Yet you want to improve ethics. What else did you want to add?
Nothing I can add.
I don't know why you're starting, but there's nothing I can add because you guys are moving forward. You won't respect the table. I asked you what else and did you have anything beyond that?
What do you mean by won't respect the table? It needs to be a second meeting.
I don't have people straight in front of me, but I do not believe a second. What does the table tabling? I think tabling requires a second, ceases the discussion and.
To table, it needs a second and then it needs to be voted on.
I make a motion to table it to have us submit the information to you as a committee back for discussion.
You have a second? What else did you want to add?
Do you want to make this into a motion when I just said it? No, Anna, or you're just, we're, I'm not shaking my head. We're in discussion and I'm giving you the opportunity to be able to speak. Thank you. So that's my addition when I said twice now is something that I initially added. We're striking out S, it'll be S. If not, it'll be T. What else did you want to add? Anything on that? I have a second.
Can you repeat that for me?
My motion.
Or I. Add it to S now?
The Herman School Committee will encourage and promote all voices to be heard at the table while recognizing that all statements are the opinion of the speaker in their personal capacity.
All those in favor? We are voting on the first. Yep, we are voting on the.
My understanding is that we're removing the first reading, removing S. Correct, now this is favored correct. That's what we're going to be on.
Correct.
And I'm going to table it.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion cares. Next up, I make a motion to approve the first reading to amend G P R R K E administration's speaker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed?
Well, I can't, you're a timer. So should I abstain or go to say no?
I want you to vote while you want to vote.
I'll go now.
Motion cares. Next up, statements.
You have a couple additional statements. The statement committee meets annually. You have the members of the statement committee listed there. It's right before my report packet. What we do, as you can see from the collective bargaining agreement, is that the, we review and recommend the approval of new statement positions, recommend removal of unneeded positions and/or, excuse me, and today recommended any adjustments to the percentage index assigned each position. These recommendations, so when we ask the school, anybody who is a school employee who happens to, they could have obviously a vested interest in a club or in some type of extracurricular, we ask them to submit documentation of what they are currently doing and why there should be an increase or perhaps a decrease or a complete new addition of the statement. And so you have in front of you, you have positions proposed for 24, 25 and adjustments proposed for 24, 25. I'll just walk you through quickly. This is the first year that Mrs. Klein has not been the student council advisor in many, 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 many years. And when we hired two new individuals, we evaluated the, actually I'm being with them, that we evaluated the amount of time that goes to student council. It is by far the most active club in the high school and it's not even, it's not even close. There's a significant amount of time, activities, there's activities every month, there's meetings every week. And so the original percentage was two individuals at two and a half percent after meeting with them. And then the statement committee, I feel very comfortable, right, at a 10%. So you can see the change in cost. In addition, the math team at the high school, that was currently at 1%, the statement committee reviewed the proposal and felt that four and a half percent of the total was spared. Science Olympia is a new position, so that obviously does not have an original percentage and we felt based upon the documentation submitted that that should be two and a half percent statement. We also reviewed the wellness ambassador and after reviewing what we believed was, you know, really good intent in that position during COVID, we, we just don't feel that it warrants a six and a half percent increase or the current six and a half percent statement, so we decreased that to 2%. And then you have, again, two new additions. One is esports. That is an MPA sanctioned sport. And in talking with our athletic director, that is where the recommendation came for that statement, to put it at the lowest level of varsity sports, which is nine and a half percent. And then spring it to the arts at your own school to have a dedicated coordinator to that. And there's a, it's a quite an event if you've ever, if you've had kids that have gone through, it's really an event that they do every spring and felt that that warranted a 4% statement. So I then put the total plus minus differential in the, and it obviously came out to be an increase of $14,695 over last year. Yes, I would like motion to that.
I make a motion to approve the statements as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
The esports, you may like to answer this, Micah. Esports, that's the lowest that we can go because it's a sport.
Yes, varsity, it's a varsity sport. An MPA, a record match sport.
Okay.
Were these in the budget I'm going to submit off currently? Is there a room in the budget that's already come out before these?
When I budget with Mrs. Yambut in the spring, I anticipate several increases because I should do. So yes, this is in the budget.
Okay. I specifically run the scene of the words we're discussing. The esports portion of it, so it's not, it's in.
Yes, esports in general is a program and it, it also has, like any sport, it has its own budget. So what, what we are making sure that this is specifically for the advisors' statement, not for equipment and anything else that might go into that. So, but yes, that's new to the budget this year. We weren't preparing for that specifically.
Any other discussion? Any extensions? All those in favor? Motion cares. Next up, administrative reports. Micah, did you want to go over any?
Yes, I have a couple of things to add. First thing I'd like to add is we didn't make this a formal piece of procedure. It is very hard to recognize, Mr. Walsh, how many students are graduating this year?
130.
130, 134, somewhere around that range? Thank you, 131 students. Every one of them has accomplished something significant and it's, it's a significant marker and a milestone in their, in their young professional careers. However, we also recognize that to be the valedictorian, the salutator of the class is incredibly challenging. Those students put a tremendous amount of time in. And so I hope that the next superintendent just takes a second. I didn't prepare any special remarks or certificates, but they will be recognized at their various events coming up. But I'd just like to say it for public record, congratulations to our salutator, which is your very, Eva Benjamin. And then congratulations to our valedictorian is Jonathan Hitchcock. So just a lot of work, a lot of hard work. I'm sure a lot of sleepless nights going to be, I don't know, I was not the valedictorian or salutator and so, but I know that it is a tremendous honor to receive that. They should be, and their obviously family should be immensely proud, quite a, quite an accomplishment. The second thing I would say, in addition to my report, is I am very appreciative of the school committee and specifically I just want to say thank you for the support that you have shown me over the last two years and two months in this position. I, as I, I told Mrs. Grant before coming that I would not lose my testimony in my final, my final words. And this is a very bittersweet moment for me. When I started here in 2008 as a teacher, teaching social studies, I was, I was pretty green, had a lot more hair and I didn't know, like my dad always says, I didn't know nothing, I didn't suspect nothing. And I can be very honest, I was a little disenfranchised with this community or a small minority in this community over the last two years. That being said, I've been, I have some tremendous mentors. My wife has been tremendously supportive of me in the last two years, as well as several of you on this committee. And my, my father, my grandfather, while he was alive. And I can honestly say that I don't hold a grudge now. Forgiveness in what Christ has done for me, look, I'm a wicked individual and I am just so thankful that I had this opportunity and that this was, this was used to change who I am. And I'm very appreciative of that and I'm thankful to say that I can now step back and see the personal growth and the spiritual growth that my family and myself are able to undergo in this. And I am proud to live in Harvard still. I am proud to drive through Harvard on a daily basis. And, and I'm very thankful for everything that has happened to me. I know that I was worried about being bitter upon leaving, to be very, to be very frank. And I can say that I'm no longer that way anymore and I will take with me the positives. And some of the funny, you know, we've had some interesting phone calls and some interesting conversations, some interesting executive sessions. And now I can honestly look at it and say, I am thankful for the trial and the rewards that have come out of this position. And so to all of you for the part that you played in that, you know what part you played. I don't need to go around the room again and thank and say this and that, but you know what part you played and I appreciate that and I'm kind of thankful for that. I would say to my administrative team, you guys are awesome. That was the shining spot in two years of work was my administrative team. And you are second to none, as I said to you. I read a Jonathan Maxwell book on leadership many, many years ago. I only remember one chapter of the book. There was the 21 year refutable laws of leadership and I don't know what chapter it was, but he said, if you're a seven, surround yourselves with eights and nines. I am not even a seven. I'm a six, I'm a five, but I surrounded myself with a bunch of eights and nines and tens. And that makes you look better when you're not. And I very much appreciate all of you who are eights and nines. Thank you so much. To the Herman staff? Thank you. You guys are awesome too. I don't know you as well, but we have amazing teachers in this district and support professionals and educational technicians, support staff, Estonian staff. 14 years, I've been here 14 years, I've gotten to know many of you and I am very appreciative of the work that you do for our students in this community. You are the glue and as much as I might harass some of you during negotiations and things of that nature about only working 100 whatever days, you are the reason why this community is so sought after to live in. And to the Herman students, we get the best students in the state. I've said it for 14 years and I will continue to say it. Herman students are the best. They are absolutely the best. I will never forget my time teaching some of those kids. And great kids here. I'm so appreciative of the opportunity folks have given me. Thank you. Thank you so much. It has truly been a wonderful journey and thank you again from the bottom of my heart. Thank you for all you have done.
I make a motion to extend the meeting till 9:00.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion cares. You take the administrative reports as represented, same with the finance report. Is there anything for facilities and safety?
I just want to make sure that it's in the public, that the financial report tend to be, shows that the 23 audit will tend to be scheduled for the first weeks, first week or two, it says first week or the end of June. And then FY '24 financial statements, if you looked at, also very common. So the 23 audit is moving forward.
Was that a discussion? I just had a couple of questions. When is the next, are we, are you taking a break for fighting meetings or?
It's June, so. I, I do not anticipate any finance committees scheduled between now and July.
Any update for facilities, track safety?
We still have, no. We still have.
And as far as policy, I know there was the policies to be able to deploy. Ryan, do you remember those ones that's like?
Yes, I do. We need to look at updating all hiring policies, GCF, GCFB and GCFB dash R in preparation for the hiring process.
Any tech may update?
Well, we're surely we're making progress. I think you're doing a great job and our Mr. Witches father is doing a great job and he's a good communicator. I think he will do very well. And I look forward to putting you in the future.
Possible future agenda items, Jesse?
What's that?
Haley?
Still subjecting policy.
Ryan?
Just the policies I just read after the new venture. Also, the superintendent's position description needs to be reviewed and validated.
Maybe? I'll step. At some point, either if it's a meeting in June or for July, there needs to be discussion of if there's going to be an R and P put out, who's going to help employ the full-time superintendent? I make a motion to approve the following eight warrants as presented by a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Any extensions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion cares. I make a motion to enter executive session from student MR S A 4056A to discuss compensation of employees at 901 Dando at second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one question. Is this clarifying what we did last month? Yeah, okay, I did.
Enter executive session at 9:01 PM. Make a motion to extend the meeting till 9:45.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion cares. Return from executive session at 9:36. I make a motion to approve administrative contract. Contracts as discussed in executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any extensions? Motion cares. I make a motion to adjourn at 9:36 PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?